This is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Planning Board. Adequate notice that this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press and the Two River Times on February ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. That notice, that notice was also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. A copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the Office of the Borough Clerk. A copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of the meeting. So I'd like to open the meeting with a roll call.
Mr. Porterman? Ms. Bush?
Yeah.
Ms. Koch?
Yeah.
Mr. Newell?
Here.
Mr. Paylor?
Here.
Mr. Roll?
Here.
Mr. Nicka? Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Olson?
Here. Okay, let's start. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America. And to the public, we will just examine one of my nation under our any divisible, the literally. We, we have no old business for this, for this meeting and we have two items of new business. The first is the capital review presentation of proposed renovation plans for the Department of Public Works.
Let me pull character.
Sure, absolutely. So before we start, just a quick few minutes, like, sure, you know, just make sure the, the board knows its role in this and how this fits.
This is a review by the board. It's one of the things that we're empowered to do by the municipal land law generally is referred to as reviewed capital projects. Number forty, colon fifty-five D, yes, thirty-one, those are companion provisions in some ordinances. But essentially what this says is that whenever the governing body is going to have an expenditure of public funds. And that can be the school, that can be local municipality, that can be some entity within our jurisdiction. This gets reviewed to us, this gets forwarded to us for reviewing the capital project. The triggering event is, okay, money's going to be spent. They have Mayor Council in one of their kickoff practices sent to us. Within a period of time, not to exceed forty-five days. It is to be reviewed by us and we can prepare a report back to Mayor and Council to explain any concerns we have about the plan. In a sense with our professionals here, we act as sort of the the governing bodies planner too, and we use our expertise to say, okay, you might want to think about this, you might want, you know, I'm thinking of this project. What kind of buffer do we have? It's a residential project. We've looked at this project. We have great faith in our presenters this evening because third times a charm, we looked at it. We looked at some version of this board, some of the members of the board back in nineteen, again in point one, this is the third. Their iteration of, of the plan, I will say that in each and every instance, you know, from the first to the second, there were certainly considerations on the comments that we had. Hopefully from the second to the third, I think, I think everything is, is here at this point in time. It's pretty well buttoned up. But to talk about site circulation, talk about in this instance, I'm expecting that it's going to hear they, obviously it's in a residential neighborhood. You have sort of an industrial complex in the residential neighborhood. What are we doing to soften either this look by way of height? What are we doing by way of buffering? What kind of onsite lighting? How's the site work by way of circulation coming in and out? In a sense, we put our, our planning caps on and then give comments to Mayor Council to say, look, this, these are what we think. We don't, we don't design this project. We don't change this project. We can make recommendations and whether or not Mayor Council wants to do that, that's up to them. I will tell you in the past, they've always been very receptive to some of the things that we discussed and some of the things we recommended. And I think overall it makes a good, for a good plan. It is identical to what we did in the sense of the capital review for the police department not too long ago. And again, we took a look at that over a couple of different iterations. We were going to suggest some modifications to them. So that's, it's a very limited role we have. As I said, they're, they're not here technically for approval, which is why I'm not going to be swearing anyone in. This is not an application before us. They're not seeking any variance relief from us. They're not seeking approvals from us. This is just their opportunity to say, what do you think, planning board? And in fact, the ordinance is designed that if we did not make a comment back to them within that forty-five days, they, they can continue and go forward. Generally, most of municipalities am associated with, like to hear from us. We generally charge people the responsibility to prepare a report on the capital review. Give them the background, give them benefit of the comments. And sometimes we will hear comments from the public that are technically outside of our, our scope or our jurisdiction, but we pass those on to Mayor Council for what it's for in, in that category. So that's our role this evening. We're here to take a look at it, put your, put your planning hats on. A good review and let's share our thoughts with Mayor Council.
Can I also say one thing, please? We have a subcommittee, the Technical Design Review Committee, of which Planning Board member Jim Newell and I attended with the architects and the engineers, as well as council members, Labor Vera and Holly. And we were very happy with the outcome.
Was there a formal report prepared or just?
No, not formal.
Just, just, okay, yeah.
Them as an introduction.
Very good.
This project.
Wonderful.
Awesome. Thanks, Mr. Kovats. Good afternoon, everybody, or good evening, excuse me. Before I jump into, jump into DPW on the Police Department Community Center. You know, we, we take this process very seriously. This is not a checkboxing exercise for us, right? We want to demonstrate to the public that we view ourselves as residents. We follow the process and everything that is recommended or taken with interest that we can do, we do. And we did that with the Police Department at Community Center. And as of twelve June, we authorized to go out to bid. So we'll be going out to bid hopefully in the next two to three weeks. So I just wanted to provide that quick background. And Mr. Kovats, just from a legality perspective, same day, I believe this was advertised as both the planning board and governing board meeting. So if another governing body member comes in, we're not violating the sunshine law, but I just want to make sure that that's true.
I was aware of that, but I appreciate you making that comment.
All right, so, you know, this, we'll, we'll provide some initial background, turn over Rich and then we'll turn over the professionals to get into the presentation, but just wanted to level set for a few minutes. You know, as, as we've gone on this journey, it was very important for the governing body to demonstrate discernment, right? And treat this project not as, as quickly as we wanted to move on PD Community Center. So I just want to highlight that because we've been articulated probably over the last four months as we've met with the Planning Board, TDRC, and had discussions that we wanted to demonstrate that, right? When we came in with the PD Community Center, we had the black mold issue, the operational security issue, and that warranted discussion meetings and all of that. So just wanted to, to, to highlight that. And going through the PD Community Center also allowed us to develop a best practice and you'll hear about that. There are significant changes in a positive manner made from the previous design that was approved back in twenty-one, I think it was, twenty-two, give or take. And you, you know, the architect, the professional, the engineer, so go into alignment with the master plan, but there are really four main components that I want you to think of as it's brief. That we have to balance, the design, the operational management of the site, enforcement and education. Right? We didn't move the site. We kept the building location in the same place. We are reducing the size of the footprint and they'll talk about that. But there's not one silver bullet that solves the recycling issue. There's not one silver bullet that solves traffic buildup, right? Think of that as an arbitrary example. So just keep those four main components in, in line. The focus of this project is and always will be the renovation. We wanted to renovate the Department of Public Works building. And I want to qualify this carefully. The current state of the DPW building and what Rich and Nick and the entire team have been working is really subpar. Not the proper exhaust in the building, which means you're working on these trucks, on these vehicles without a proper exhaust. The one side where the, the concrete floor wasn't laid correctly fifteen years ago. And it puddles and it's jagged so much so that you can't lay on it. And it's unacceptable. What's happening? Roof, another aspect of it. So we pay a lot of attention, we were purposeful, that this was to renovate. This was to produce a product that as the Department of Public Works and engineering grows, evolves, and whatever that may look like, long beyond when we're gone, that that building can handle it. Now, although the focus is the renovation, we did have to balance the site improvements, because it is an industrial site in residential area. We did have to balance some offsite improvements, specifically a sidewalk on Maple Avenue, which will impact the couple of residents. It was really important that when Kristen and I started the process, that we started with community engagement and went forward. So we had two mini open houses first. So leading up to the effort, you had Allen Street points of contact, Maple Avenue points of contact, and Third Street points of contact. So over two mini open houses, we met with those key points of contact to level set and get up to speed with all the discussions that took place, and they were both very educational. From there, we then segued into two regular open houses. So think of the same thing we did with the Police Department Community Center. We did one on a Saturday, we did one on a Wednesday, and the goal was to solicit the feedback. And the same approach where we demonstrated the evolution of the drawings of the design applied here. The mini open houses informed open house one. We took feedback, informed open house two, took feedback and then landed at our final design component, which I see tonight. The other thing really focuses is how to reduce the impact of the industrial site in the residential area, and the professionals will go through that. Given our timeline, the state of the building, the focus to optimize economies of scales with the owners reps that we have hired to support Police Department Community Center DPW building. We do, been doing a tremendous amount of concurrent coordination. So the TDRC on June sixth, I believe it was, engaged with the construction and code officials already. We're engaged with the licensed site media and professional because there are what they call areas of concern for the DDP that will all be resolved. So all of these different stakeholders we have brought to the forefront because it just makes this process so much more inclusive, effective and transparent. So I'll pause there. Did I miss anything? I want to turn over Rich to see if you wanted to add anything or say anything, and then we'll turn it over to, to Joe Raftery at Colliers, Ron Grammar from KGD to jump right in.
Good evening. Just to start off, obviously I'm the planning board engineer and I'm a borough engineer. I'm also director of Public Works. So the day-to-day operations, all the stuff you see going on within the borough from the streets and parks, maintenance, building maintenance type work is done through, you know, this facility in my office. The building was built nineteen seventy-four. It's basically a wooded structure with some steel columns. We have ten full-time DPW employees. Myself and also Nick Porczynski handles a lot of our venues. So there's twelve total. And then depending on the season, we'll have seasonal help assist us in summer or during leaf season. As Councilman mentioned, the main focus is a renovation. This is obviously the, the new focus that we're heading towards based on the prior design for a number of reasons. The site works well for what we do. The building works well for what we do. It's functioned for almost fifty years. But it needs to be brought up to code. It needs to be brought up to the proper amenities that employees should have. Safety features, we've mentioned the lack of air quality, HBAC. I mean, the list goes on and on. The roof has been leaking for too long, I can't even mention. But for a number of reasons, the good thing is here we are tonight. We've got a solid plan, we think. We tried to keep cost obviously in mind and keep the scope of the work focused on the needs that we have. The one thing I pushed during this project and even the last project was we need to focus on what we need and not so much the things we would like to have. We function well as a small borough with what we have and how we do it. I, I always use a term within the department, less is more. And what we have works. So that's what, that's, that's why this renovation, I feel, will be a success. The one thing that we're looking at is the roof is getting worse and worse. Yes, we're on an accelerated schedule and we, we hope to get out to bid, you know, in the next sixty days or whatever that, whatever that number is. We're already talking to companies to get some type of temporary office space or a break room, bathroom facility at the site. There's other things we also need to do is the fuel pumps need to be replaced if that's not part of this project, if that'll be a capital upgrade. And the site work itself is really minimal. There's some minor tweaks that we need to do to make it better. You had mentioned the education piece. But what we have is what we have, but we also want to plan a little bit for the future if there's certain things we bring back in-house or if we see a need to grow the department from an employee standpoint or just like at your jobs, trends change, things tend to focus towards other aspects and we need to plan for that. So I think that's all I have to add.
And, and if, if I may, he's very modest. I'm going to give you some numbers, right? Because we have them. Hundred acres naturally, a great area to maintain. Twenty-seven center miles of streets to plow, twenty-six center miles of streets to maintain. Three hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty catch plus catch basins, over five thousand square feet of sidewalks to maintain. Just to give you an idea of the breadth of what they do out of that building, right? So yes, less is more, but the scope of work is significant. So with that, I want to turn over to Joe Raftery from Colliers Engineering, Ron Grammar from KDG Designs. It's a discussion, right? We're having, you know, a discussion, ask your questions, and then we'll close that out at the end, just so we can level some of the recommendations. Thank you. You guys can refer to PC if you want.
Good evening. Joe Raftery, Colliers Engineering Design. These guys pretty much stole everything I was going to talk about. So I don't have to be very, like, up here all night, but at the same time, as Rich was saying, this is an opportunity to improve the site without necessarily having to overhaul the site and drive up a possible project, though this is on the building renovation. So what we'll look at is actually reducing the on average rate. Right now, fence line is going to be moving in six to seven feet. You come on site and you're at that fence line, that fence is deteriorating, and there's about six to seven feet of dead space that no one's parking on. It's just kind of not useful. So we're actually going to soften the site by moving the fence line inward. And with that, we will hopefully have forty-five feet from the curve on the southwest side. On the Maple side, they're further away from DPW, they're fifty feet. From an operation standpoint, we can make it equal, but we're making it better than it is right now. On top of that, we are softening and we're going to repurpose the ground in the landscaping area along Third Street. We have some shade trees. We've already met with the borough certified tree expert. And we have a list of native Fairhaven species that are probably similar to what you guys are putting in the community center or have recommended in the past. So all those, all that input is going to go into the landscape design. So we have a, especially from Allen and from Third, it will be more or less not hidden, but it's going to be a softer look as you go down Third Street. We're going to put in a six-foot-high tumbled roof wooden fence. That's part of what we got out of the house community feedback. We had pictures of all different types of fence operations from getting in and out of the site. It is an industrial site. And right now, if you go through, you'll see that there's a little TLC is needed at the entrance and the exit from the operations of these larger vehicles. So we're going to expand the entrance and the exits to be thirty feet, and we're going to have a gate that would be forty-five feet, but fifteen feet of this can lever. So it's going to allow for the operations to be smoother and basically not impact day-to-day operations for a rigid stack. Going around on the back end on Maple, where we're putting in again a new fence. Here are trees that have been designated that are to be removed as part of this project. That comes from our certified tree expert report. Coming around the, the natural area, we have the relocated impound area. Because right now, behind the salt building, it just seems like from a functionality standpoint, we'd rather allow that to become more natural area. And if it doesn't impact operations, we're just kind of tuck it in that back right corner. And then we're also going to not necessarily reconfigure, but just kind of organize the recycling area. We are going to expand the concrete footprint, have a designated area for the carboard, which I know is an ongoing issue. It would be well done by snow fence so that Rich's team can come in and remove it within the site without impacting the residents on Allen. But it would also allow people like myself to come in and know where to dump it, personally, just doing whatever they do now. So we also along Allen Street are putting in four designated spaces for drop-off for hard work. Now, I know it's not exactly the easiest site to pull over and come across, but again, it's an existing condition that people are already using for drop-off. So we're just looking to tuck it in, basically make it so that has less of an impact on track. Within the site itself, where the existing storage containers are, that's mostly going to be removed. They'll return the topsoil and seating. We are looking at returning three thousand square feet of the site to topsoil and seating. It may expand, but that's going to go further as we look at the operations. So if it's not topsoil on the seating, you'll see it as gravelstone because it's not going to be for the hand field cap. That will be simply storage or snowplows be stored, stuff like that. This site is not right now a major development. The stormwater on the site will go back to where it is right now. It will look through this scum stone into the existing inlet. The roof though, right now, goes through seven scuppers and daylight out onto Maple. We are detaining that for the two and ten-year storm. For soil erosion purposes, this will trigger variable soil, and those are going to be detained in two dual chamber systems that will allow us to minimize over wall or anything that hit me from stormwater damage.
Excuse me, is, is, so the stormwater, can you sort of put that in conclusion, is, will the stormwater be more or less than, or the same than it was, than it is right now?
We're going to be detaining more, but it's not going to be a full-blown major development where we're putting in green infrastructure and that sort of thing right now.
But it's going to be improved.
It's going to be improving this. We're going to have a reduction on the two and ten-year score. So we'll have pretty opposed hydrogas, we need cement, it's oil erosion, shall we? So I guess that kind of concludes, unless there's any questions, we do have the plan, the reconfiguration of the concrete pad, which is going to be part of this site plan, but not necessarily for this contract. They're looking at different that. But we are looking at putting in light and followers for the fuel, for the fuel to get out. So again, right now, there's an existing shoebox light that kind of goes over the fence. We're looking at possibly taking that out and then putting in a follower light so that for operations standpoint, if you want a snowstorm, stuff like that, they can see where they need to go, but it won't have any impact. But it's just in terms of lighting, we do have a show on here that the basically there's a zero output from a booking standpoint out of fence line.
Just, just to clarify, your building lighting aside, you're not going to have tall pole lighting that exceeds the height of the fence. It's just the follower lighting.
That's the only light that would be on us.
Okay.
Yeah. There is going to be a pole on plan for mountain security, but that won't be having any lighting or anything like that. That would just be so, as we talked about, enforcement, that would give the opportunity for the police to, you know, see what's going on in terms of dumping and such.
And that was the most significant feedback was the recycling center. So putting security there, ensuring that enforcement is operating, optimizing the design, letting from the red carpet, through the wrong set, without any of their cardboard, all those factors to Joe, by the way, there.
I know at the open house, there was discussion about cardboard and I'm on the environmental commission as well. Will there be a roof over the cardboard to keep it, is that?
No, we won't be able to, and I can't remember the claw name, forgive me, but the claw machine that is used to get the body now. Would it, we would have to build, it had to be so high that we can operate the machinery underneath that it was ultimately assessed, that would be counter to reducing industrial footprint. So that's where operational management comes in, because you get your greatest return when the cardboard is not wet. So if, if we know a storm's coming, the operational management would dictate, hey, let's go in, clean it out now. We've got a hundred twenty pounds of cost, maybe it's around there that we get and make sure that the cardboard is not impacted at the rate.
So we, we tried to do a cover, but operationally it hasn't worked yet.
Yeah.
If, if I could just, and I, I don't want to bring up gas, but I want to get an idea of comparison. We've looked at it a couple of times, just what's here and what's not here, what may have fallen off the plan, what may have been moved. I know when I'm speaking with Councilman, the Office of Emergency Management is no longer be out of here. It's going to go over to DP, it's going to go over to Police Department, correct?
Correct. I can speak to the significant changes, if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, I was, I, you know, salt dome. Let's not, yeah.
Okay, so there's five commercial containers currently on the DPW site. Two of which are OEM slash PD, three of which are DPW. All of those go away. So all the OEM functionality shifts to the Police Department Community Center. Previous design had a parking lot completely designed on the Third Street side. That's no longer part of this design.
So there's not going to be like a thirty parking space in the trunk.
Negative, correct. That's completely gone, maintained a great space. Previous design had a brand new buffer building shifting closer to the Third Street side. That is now not happening. We're renovating current building. There was also a new cupboard made between Allen Street and Maple that is not happening. The salt dome is going to be a facelift consistent with the elevation that Ron will go over. Salt dome's not moving. The impound is moving from one corner of the lot to the other, chain link fence, big block will follow current protocol of police. The fence pushing back, as Joe mentioned, is a change, but that's to reduce, increase landscaping buffer. And we're not touching, I don't know if Hendrickson was touched, was Hendrickson some touched? Was it Hendricks? I can't say, but that side touched during the previous design now. We're not touching it. Because that, that triggers a whole new calculation for affordable housing, because once you touch vacant land, the, the myriad of brim look back. So we're not touching that. So that should kind of give you side of the fence is going to be six foot six with the, the curb in the burn, it looks like the true construction.
And, but you did mention there's going to be either a new design or a new fueling station, excuse me.
It's going to be a reconfigured. Right now, the current code states that a vehicle that's getting fueled has to be on the concrete pad. So right now, it's just not asked for. So at that point, they're going to reconfigure from an operations standpoint so that it's easier for them to use it. And put in a follower lighting as well, but they are going to try to salvage the budget.
It's basically staying where it is. We're just going to pivot it as appropriate to work within the site based on the fence line that's coming in. But, but it's not part of this. It's, and the other thing too is the, because of the wooded fence and the proximity of the fuel tanks to the wooded fence, it doesn't need code combustible standpoint. So we need to, we need to move things around anyway a little bit, but we're like talking within ten or twenty feet, but it's, if we're all in that area, and it's not part of this contract. Some of the site improvements will prep it, so the governing body can move that and move forward with, look at that project.
And you, can you describe what will be done to decrease runoff? I'm going to, is it decreasing, I'm hearing some decrease in impervious surface.
So the impervious service right now, we have where the containers are, there's a lot of gravel. So that's going to become now the three thousand square feet of that as well, as well as with the Allen Street, when I would make that progress. So and then on top of that, right now, you have a she flow into seven scuppers and roof from the existing DPW. And they just go out through standard above ground roof layers. So in the event that a heavy rainfall, that's just going out through the back and go down to Maple and enter into the storm system. We're detaining that in two double roof layers. We're detaining that in two double animal chambers that will be, let's say. In the event of a massive rain event or there's overflow, there will be an overflow pop up emitter that will be able to out to Maple. But for typical two, ten year storm, that water will not be exciting. So the entire DPW building rooftop will be detained on site. And the reason we're doing two chambers, uh two areas is there is an existing uh. There's an existing utilities in the rear of the building, including the generator, that we don't wanna mess around with for us. So it's easier just to take four. So four, four of them are gonna go, where it's at third and the other direction and just.
And, and what do you anticipate the, the roof to be, last time we were talking about is that. Is this a metal roof, are we still talking about a metal roof?
A slight slope from front to back should be proper.
Will there be a, a transition plan while work is going on, will the site still be operational there and?
We're working through the logistics of it, like Rich mentioned, we'll have a trailer. Um for temporary workspace likely sometime in the summer that become operational. As we shift forward, the sequencing, yes, hundred percent.
There had been discussion before, and I don't know if it's still on the. It's gonna be something that came off the plan, there had been discussion last time about putting in underground conduits for future electric use. Is that something that's still being looked at or being under consideration?
So we've been conducting our diligence on that and it doesn't seem advantageous to put any conduit. Right now, I'll let Ron go into it, we just got back from the MEP. The roof is designed to be able to handle solar at future. Do you wanna talk a little bit about the, the ongoing development of the MEP of our diligence?
Actually, Rich, maybe you'll address it better than I can, but actually the electrical system in the building right now is. At, at best and trying to bring it up to a level that we can be for future EVs. Would probably financially at the beginning, it would require mass underneath to make them all out of it.
Yeah, we um. But we, we are aware that whatever, we, we do wanna put the, the service line underground. From Maple, so the plan was to put in spare conduit at that time in the trench. To allow for that future upgrade, if the power of the street gets to a proper service. Cause right now it's only single phase, there's no three phase on Maple or. And. We, we met with the electrical engineers last week and we had a short bit of discussion on this, uh knowing what the future is. I just don't know where DPW vehicles are at that, you know, right now they're focusing on uh, you know, personal vehicles, personal cars and trucks like. The, the TPW type heavy trucks and uh manufacturers really haven't rolled much out. You know, some of them have gone to propane, you know, we even looked at that years ago, but it just didn't make sense, you know, cause course it's filling station is out pre-owned. Things of that nature, but um. The point is, we're gonna make sure whatever we do doesn't get undone, say in ten years or five years.
I think that was a good call before it last year, if we're, if we're gonna open up something.
Yes.
And we can plan for, you know, twenty years, thirty years, or another, like you said, another fifty, let's, let's try to do that so we're not.
And the other thing too, the way the site's laid out currently, which it will stay is, most of the vehicle parking is along the perimeter of the site. Up against the fence line, obviously on the other side of the fence is either grass or landscaping, so if you had to trench and put in the EV stations. It's a simple, easy thing to run some conduit and pop up rather than, you don't have to saw cut pavement and concrete and. Jackhammer and all that, so the future needs for that, we can certainly accommodate. But I think it's important that we've got the condom in place, at least in the right way. So in the event that our company does, you know, upsize everything, we can, we can connect to that.
Then like the police department, specific to the DPW, the regulatory guidance of the state has not dictated. What EV looks like at a police department or at a DPW, so we're tracking, working very close with colleagues on the basis.
Um and then the other thing too, the. When you see the EV stations go in some of these sites, you know, throughout New Jersey or Monmouth County, they're open to the public. We're technically a DPW facility, we're not gonna have residents or visitors come in and plug in their cars. At DPW, so. Most of the intent for that is to allow for the growth of those electric vehicles. At those sites, when you go to the shopping malls or the movie theaters you see them now, things of that nature.
As you know, they already give bonuses for parking if you.
Right, the developers have, there's different incentives out there, we're, we're the municipality, the site is technically. There's signage there now, it says authorized personnel only, even though people still do come in to visit us, but. It, it's, it's not the same type of situation like at the community center where it's, you know, parking lot.
Just, just as to what's, is there currently a, a watering system for landscaping at the site and if not, is there?
There is no lawn sprinklers or irrigation and we're not proposing anything, as we mentioned, we're focusing on more of a native. Species and most likely drought tolerant plantings.
And Mr. Corvus is really driving further of the way the PD and communities track the design and so will the DPW. The contract ensure that the, for here the plants are nurturing, it's such a matter that they don't die off. So the role is to allow that one year window of let them really establish, style and thinking. And if we do use native and drought tolerant whatnot, similar to what exists now, no water irrigation, that it should. Pay off for a quarter.
That's all I have. Next question, um. Probably with you, uh some of the feedback from the, the community immediately, I know it sounded like you did the right way, you like went with the immediate periphery. And talked to Allen Street and Maple, uh I'm curious what some of their initial. Um concerns were about the original design and the feedback that you got that you incorporated this, it sounds like it was, you know, significant conversation, so. Yeah. Kind of, you know, think about what this might look like from their perspective, yeah?
Yeah, um. Well, in, in all the open houses, there was a resounding um positive feedback of the inclusion of Apollo. Right, so that was, everybody all went out of their way, for PD and users, I mean even DPW. The fact that we reduced the parking lot on the third street side was significant. And we actually got feedback, there's gonna be a third street face two uh road improvement, etcetera, this, we got a lot of feedback to move on that. Decreasing, or should be decreasing the footprint, not if, if DPW is a one acre lot, I'm not saying reduce the, the lot size, right? But the, the DPW footprint itself, producing that overwhelming support uh for that. And leveraging the landscape and buffer. Um as far as the building itself, and, and I know Ron hasn't briefed yet, uh they said as long as it's. The director of engineering DPW signs off and it can support future capability for having whatever's inside, people had a healthy understanding that. The public's not really gonna dictate what the interior looks like, what we gave them the option to comment everything, right, fully transparent, their tax very knowledge. All of the feedback, there was some feedback on the fence, most resident that, hey, whatever the neighbors want, pointing to the surrounding neighbors. Um there was some feedback on the elevation, which we'll get into, it all boiled down to the center. That's really where it was, I mean, we literally sat by that door right there, we had the iterations at that door and we would shuttle. And the first open house, we went a half hour over, just because we're talking through design iterations, what can you do? Um ultimately, we had three design options. And then the same residents that came the first time and some came back and just ultimately landed on what is in front of them today. Um and having a healthy understanding that you, you, there's not a perfect, there's no, that's why those four components are key, right? So, you know, they were happy that the footprint reduced in a nutshell, they're happy that the size of the footprint was reduced. We were increasing the quote unquote insulation of the site, landscaping fence, etcetera, and then that we're optimized for recycling. There's also a tremendous amount of time spent on the. Like tremendous, so we met with the low voltage team, the IT team. And I know exactly the type of cameras I've won out there that are in the hand of that, I already spoke to our IT point of contact. That can be tied directly into the police department, um enforcement, this will fail if enforcement. Right, you can't have one of four pillars, right, so.
Yeah, that's great, um, yeah, I would, I would envision. Well, two things, um kinda, you know, deferring to you, I think the same way with the police department, we asked the chief, um. If you're good with the design, the function, I, I feel like that's an important kind of endorsement, you know, and then if feedback is heard. About the logistics of recycling, you know, and enforcement, it sounds like a huge issue, I get it, like what, people from other towns or people not. Separating appropriately, businesses.
Contractors.
Okay.
People dumping up, leaving bulk items in there, throwing stuff over the fence, whatever.
True story. Turkey carcass, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh that's good, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Uh Styrofoam recycling, something coming up at the open house, any, I know we talked about the Middletown possibly.
Yeah, I have a, I have a call out to Middletown, um to see if we can set up an interlocal with them. Um they have a, the Monmouth County sponsored project there, any Monmouth County resident can go there, any.
Resident.
Resident, we're waiting to confirm if there's some agreement with the town, if there is, that's something that we'll get. We have some call to the mayor to encourage this one.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can, can you walk us through sort of the site of how you mentioned the location of recycling, since it was. Since that seems to be a major focus, can you just walk us through, you know, how someone comes in, where they, where they park, how they're not gonna block the ingress? How they're gonna dump all third?
So right now, it's, it's pretty much pull over on the west side of the road, you just go in, toss, whatever you need to toss. So no oversight.
Yeah, there's a, there's a man gate, you know, there's a fenced in area, there's a wooden gate that you walk in off Allen Street. So you have to park on Allen and walk your stuff in.
Okay.
You don't drive into the site, open your trunk and then start heaving stuff over the fence, although we get that.
Are those main gates closed during the day?
They're not, because the, the. The operation is, we're out on the street constantly, you know. Multi-tasking all day.
Rich, did you guys look further into like um front door opener type devices, the gates, they keep closed during the day, keep public out?
Things that we're looking at as an option is electric gates for the site itself. But given the span of the entrance and the structural design that would be required to. Open those gates and the cost, getting any, and the electric upgrade to run those gates. We haven't dismissed it, we're still looking at that, and then we're also looking at maybe a possible uh electric gate that or a. A, a latch or something that would close the, the gate at the recycling yard at. Like right now, it's open till dusk. So, you know, every day dusk changes technically, so it's um. It, it's, it, it becomes, it, it's difficult to, to, for whatever reason, to get the gate closed or sometimes. Things are in front of it and, you know, so that may be a solution. But I think the education, I think the security uh plans are gonna be key.
Right, so as, as of now, your, your big um vehicle gates are on roll, like roll.
They're on rollers.
And then you're, you're gonna latch them to the lock on every night and take the lock off in the morning, kinda scenario?
That's what we do now, yeah, and, you know, we're there from seven to three thirty, so. And like I said, during the day, the employees are out cutting the fields, keeping up the brush, so the site itself is somewhat quiet. It's basically myself and the vehicle maintenance uh employee in the shop. And then you'll have a few employees coming and going as the day goes on, but back to the recycling, the, the functionality of it is. Is you come in, you park on Allen, you walk your stuff in, you drop it off, as we know, e-commerce is exploding. You know, even over the last ten years, the amount of cardboard that we take for this size town is unbelievable. And remember, we do have curbside pickup weekly, ninety five gallon cans every Wednesday get picked up in front of everybody's house. But for whatever reason, the overflow of recycling that we get, the cardboard, there will be a mountain there. Every Monday morning and we do have a part-time employee, they work at least twenty hours a week maintaining it. Along with our staff jumping in when, when need be as well, uh but I think the. The plan that we have is, is a great improvement. It's a minor shift to allow that, that pen area for the cardboard, cause right now it just gets thrown in there. We tried an old trash uh uh cardboard compactor, we had, we had bought years ago. But the amount of cardboard we get, you can't keep up with it, the, the, the time it takes to compact cardboard, it's, it's a constant.
Compactor now is, is, is a front end loader pushing that on top of the.
Right, and then the other piece of it too, this comes to education, the, the cardboard that comes in. We have the star clone, we have the bubble wrap, we have the peanuts, we have all the packing materials. They're just leaving it in there, throwing it in there, so then we have to go through and handpick all that out. So hoping with the improvement, the functionality being a little more user friendly, the education, I think you'll see. A better process of how things happen over there with recycling. And then I think too, with having those four, I hope they're on street, but they're somewhat. Here, inside the curb line will allow. They're pulling the traffic. Uh increase, you know, for safety reasons, functionality of that area, because it does get busy, and if you see it, it is. Because of the way the site is oriented, you know, we have the gate coming into our site. And sometimes you've got two or three cars stacked up, dropping off recycling. And then you've got the landscapers that come in, the UPS trucks that are dropping off Amazon boxes, so there's a lot going on. It's no different than any other street, but there's, there's just that increased activity because of the recycling. And statutorily, we don't need a recycling, but. Years ago, believe it or not, Fairhaven was kind of on the forefront and we, we started recycling. I think we were one of the first municipalities in Monmouth County that really brought it, brought it to where it is and um. There's a need, so I try to maintain.
Not having is a big problem.
Qu- qu- question, we're not, with the. Improved uh workflow, so to speak, uh at the DPW per se, we're not planning on making any changes to pick up schedule, are we?
No. No, I think today, well, we've told, we've told residents that when, that's five year board is done. Right, there's gonna be, whatever you call it, a grease period, you know, some. Some shock to the system when we started forcing, there's gonna be a little bit of running pain. When we balance design, operational management, program and education. So is there a potential for it at some time post implementation? Sure, but is that something that we know right now? We have to get it implemented, we have to get it done, and then, you know, when somebody gets a two hundred fifty dollar fine for dropping something off when they're not supposed to. That's gonna send a shock, it is, and it's gonna come back to that office and it's gonna come back to him like, hey, you know, I paid my taxes or. But at the end of the day, we have to enforce it. You know, because the people are around that area, but it does, I can, I can send pictures. Show you the amount of what gets dropped, what's thrown over the fence, and what get fallen down the streets.
I believe it, no, I just, I guess my question is, cause um while our house, the current house in Barrett is being renovated, we are living in the temporary house in Ross. So I'm participating in their recycling, like. Structure, it's less pickups, it's the smaller cans. And honestly, it's, it forces you to go to the recycling center in Rossin like much more often, and honestly, it's not better, in my opinion. Um Fairhaven's got it right, uh with the electric arm and the ninety five gallon can, so I don't wanna see any changes to what Fairhaven's. Recycling cadence is at that, for hang to go, so.
The other thing I just wanna add too, and, and this board has been part of it, when we have a site plan come for us, our ordinance requires. A refuse and recycling area in that site plan. So through the years. Some of the businesses have moved over to more, to a private collection on the site lands that we've been involved with. That has helped reduce the amount of product that comes to the recycling yard. That will continue, that is ordinance, that ordinance has been in effect for many, many years. That may come into play with some of the enforcement as well, where we. That may come into play with some of the enforcement as well, where we start to monitor who's bringing stuff in. And. But I think from, from the body here, and, and the work that we do here, we've made that improvement, and. Those sites have. Maintained and collected their own recycling and trash. They basically privatized it for collection, which is. Brought down the amount of product that comes to the, to the Allen Street site here. Which is back.
Drew, how's the, the conversation with the police gone with the enforcement, you know, sometimes police don't like to give idiots to the residents, you know, and, or something that we're looking forward to, or sort of. Resistant to.
Chief is one hundred percent of course, okay, and he understands it's necessary, he will.
Yeah.
Um, and the other piece that he's also balanced, and Rich has been on the Russian meeting as well, is. We had, um, we had an important, a landline play that said, just spare me twenty seconds, um, and. We had a, we had a, we had a Russian league enforcement issue where a resident put their stuff out, wasn't supposed to. Right to the next pickup, and, uh, they basically said, I'll leave it there, it's not worth it. So the reason I bring that up is, is one, our fine is gonna be hefty, what it is, I'm not gonna say it's ten thousand dollars, right, but it's gonna be something that's neat to carry. And then at the end of the day, there's gonna be that growing pain where you have the cops are gonna have to write a couple of tickets. We're a small town, message will get very fast, you know, right, but. You know, we'll have that grace period. We'll likely take feedback from. Mayor, council, thorough. BPW with how long that grace period should be, how many times, how many, you know, warning letters can we get before we actually write that first name? That, I don't know, that will be a gray area, but Chief is a hundred percent okay.
And so this is mostly gonna be a camera recording, and then we'll track the license plate, is that what?
Yeah, and then have it feed directly to the PD.
I think once that poll goes up. You'll see it from matter drop.
Yeah, I agree.
That's where we. Give a lot of perks, recreation, they just want it out of there, because people see it, they just think it's, you know, eye in the sky. And they're like, whoa, whoa.
Not this guy, I know the exact camera. Pretty awesome.
Maybe all signs as well, with.
Sign is.
Move the fake camera, the signage, and fake camera with the turd people, like, there's, regardless. Sorry.
Yeah.
It's home and share. Yeah.
And the other thing is, the, the size of the department, we don't have the ability to staff. A recycling center like some of the other municipalities do. Some of the larger towns have. One or two employees there all day checking IDs, seeing what's coming and going, it's getting dropped off. Even though it's at our site. You know. It's not possible to be within that fenced area at all times, yeah, there's times I catch people bringing stuff in, or. The part-timer has to, you know. Stop someone from bringing in whatever they're bringing in, but. A lot of it happens after hours. And when someone wants to get rid of something, let's face it, they're just gonna try to get rid of it, and. It happened, there are times they'll come in and ask, and I'll say, no, this is for recycling, your wooden fence and drunk beer car is not recycling, and.
They have to learn. If you're from getting from street to, where we have situated with career recycle. In trappings, because, you know, they're just odd shapes, so you're gonna have to drag something from knee to the dais. While a camera's up there, so the person that drops the mattress, there's no. I, I really need to pick the sidewalk, saws, not like, okay. Uh, but you're gonna have to really want to get rid of this, go. These are eight feet, five foot in between, so you're walking thirty-five feet right into the camera. So I, I just think it's kind of a challenge.
Are there gonna be signs of those four parking spaces that they're all for recycling, or is it?
I think that would have. Leave that to you.
I think the intent was to just leave it as. As a small area off the side, we're not even gonna stripe it.
Okay.
And.
People just pull.
That's something we can change if it becomes an issue.
If there's not something yet already, or just finding it a little bit, just so that you're not having trouble, right?
But there'll be a general sign that indicates stop here to go to the recycling centers, people don't try to pull in the main gates.
There will be, I would envision some type of directional signage, and the other thing is. Uh, and we have to talk to Chief, but we wanna look at some of the, the on-street parking on Allen. Um, right now, you'll see cars come in off a third, and they pull over off to the side of the road in the wrong direction. And. If we start having that happen with these four spaces, you're gonna have a bottleneck.
Right.
So. Once again, there's gonna be the learning curve, there's gonna be the education, there's gonna be. We have communications within the borough that we can send out, through social media, through website. And, and educate, and, and just come up with the best practice, better practice of how we do it.
People.
Yeah. Renovation, yeah.
Renovation. You mind if I protect and hit our way and kind of point at? Yeah, thanks. So. The renovation of the building, there's a lot of light things that we need to do in the building. Fifty-year-old, not a tremendous, been done over the past fifty years, I don't know. After all the lighting, safety issues, the functionality out of it, although it works pretty well for what they have now, we talked about things. That can be improved upon, you know, moving the exhaust tubes, we work with the trucks. Uh, we're trying to bring it up to the current code, particularly in terms of accessibility, although. That has to be acceptable, there's always the odds that a tenant, for your employee, breaks a place in non-coverage, right, so he needs to go to the end of the avenue, he's bad. We're gonna draft a lot of the types of things. Um, the biggest issue for the residents was not the inside, it was the outside. But also the outside real quickly. We, we couldn't really change a whole lot, right, the idea was to dress up the appearance of it as best we could with all the materials. It's an old building, it's dark, it's all wood, a lot of the wood needs to be replaced. So we're gonna come back with all new, mostly maintenance-free materials, so this is the front elevation. This is the rear, and the two sides. So effectively, there's gonna be six bays, there's a third now, we're on each side, center section is the office bay. We're gonna go back with glass overhead doors, that's both the ones now that are kind of round now, with a few small windows in them. Um, we're gonna do stone piers to break it up. The center section becomes stone along the lower half, the side wall, we're gonna do floor-to-ceiling glass. On the second floor, as much glass as we can get on the lower floor. Entry door will have glass in it as well. Um, all the trim will be an AZAC PVC type material, so there's not gonna be any paint or anything like that. The back of the building is gonna be all siding, um, sides will be siding, we'll have mostly the stone in the middle section, and stone on the piers. We'll have lights in between each of the bays, um, they're gonna be. With the light wearing going down to give you illumination for people going in the doors. With a little bit of illumination casting up, just for an accent more than anything. Uh, and as we talked about earlier, the, the photo metric shows that the light level isn't gonna go beyond the fence line or the tree line, in the worst case scenario, so. So there'll be one, two, three, four lights along the front, there'll be some lights built into the stop that's shining down on the doors. Uh, or if people are a bit of a man, if you were at the front, and then on the back, we'll have two, four lights, really just for general illumination, for lights, uh, for safety purposes. And a little bit of an accent, nothing, nothing substantial, um. Before I move to the, the plans, are there any questions on what the outside looks like, we're, we're kind of going with a gray theme. We looked at it in terms of gray and brown, right now it's brown, so we're gonna try to get it with a different, a little bit more modern, but effectively it's gonna be. You know, kind of a darker stone material, lighter gray, we should put it up to the light trip.
What kind of siding is it?
Black siding. Yeah, we looked at vinyl, we looked at hardy. A cement tissue product, we looked at metal, and we decided vinyl is probably the most positive factor in these things. For the long term, and probably look easily replaceable, and we added the intersection that needed to be replaced.
Were, were colors discussed with the, in your?
Yeah.
They chose that.
Random.
Kind of a page.
That's gonna be our mantra here.
Great, by the way.
Then they, they chose this exact elevation. Down to, down to the type of door, and it's something that. And all that was incorporated into what your seat said.
Yeah, the elevation hasn't really changed since they were like, this is pretty much what we came up with, everybody so far, it's been pretty happy.
Why didn't you just use tone? Vertically on the left side. And not the right.
No. That wall, this, this, these three bays step back further than these bays, these bays are actually forward, proud of those, these come out forward. This steps back a couple of feet, and this, these three bays, that's all of that, so if you're looking at this side. This wall is all siding, this wall coming at us is all stone, and I was just trying to break up the difference between, you know, kind of the office space versus. The, you know, the, the days, the native days. So just to give a little bit, a little bit of diversity. Rather than doing everything all in line sliding.
Welcome to the windows, what's there now, what we're composing, and then.
So the bays, all right now, are solid steel doors, a few windows in there. The backside has windows that go. All the way along, whole top section. All the way. We're gonna eliminate all that, and all the glasses shine, it's original fifty-year-old, we're just gonna go back with a series of pint openings along the top. And then the offices with downstairs, there were too many offices on the backside, and you have a lot of windows there and there. The way out are two doors, all of it's gonna be openable, right now there are no openings, so. And the architect, I like, can see some natural ventilation, they're possible, pretty good, and weather like this, especially when you've got all the garage bays open, you can open the rest of the windows open, and, you know, get the natural air flow through the building. Uh, let me stay away from the plants, it might be easier to spell, see what's going on. So in terms of the plan, nothing has changed too dramatically. You still have three garage bays on either side, all blue center. Well, it's eight inches. We've got another entrance going, the same way on this side, this entrance also remains. These two garage doors remain, we're not gonna be leaving in these two days back here. We're adding a door here and here, for, for the ease of getting in and out, you know. Right now, we wanna get the back of the site to go over into the. These offices stay, Richard's office stays, there's an existing bathroom here now that has, I think, a toilet and a urinal, we're going back with a similar scenario, but we're making it accessible. We're adding a second bathroom. The backside, both will be accessible. Right now, there's a very small bathroom up there, it's not acceptable at all, I mean, it's a very, very tiny bathroom. Behind the bathrooms, we're gonna do lockers, I don't believe we have any lockers, like, they are, they're brown, or they're, we're just gonna do actual nice built-in lockers. Um. Some storage, a bench, so people can sit down, they can sit down, they can take off their jacket, whatever they need to do, I guess you can do time pockets area as well.
It's a turd piece.
The utility closet remains, we're pretty new, uh, IP closet, we have two walls, right now there are no walls, the back of all garage bays. It is basic tool storage, basic storage, that type of thing, we're gonna build two new offices, and we're gonna put a mezzanine above us, so. The garage bays are two stories long. So we're gonna try to utilize some of that space in the back by doing a mezzanine from here and through here, with stairs that lead up, and an office below, which one? Upstairs. Currently, there's a bathroom here, which is very small, we've eliminated it. Everything will be on the first floor. Um, right now, there's a private office back here, I guess there's a few employees back here, and the rest of it all wide open. We've flipped, we've made the private office in the front, this will be floor-to-ceiling glass over the work there, you can kind of see what's going on daily, after soon something new going. Better sense of security of what's happening, and the rest is gonna remain wide open. Right now, we're showing a couple of desks here, and some table and chairs back here for break room, but effectively, this space can be utilized however you want to be. There is a small countertop here, do you have a sink up there now? There's a small kitchenette there upstairs now. Gonna stay in the same spot, it'll all be new, but the goal is really to give you some flexibility, just keep all this wide open, so you have. You know, a break room, they want to do lunch, or they have a meeting, or you can call lecture, uh, uh, desk. For employees, it gives us flexibility. Uh, it's a long, narrow space, it's kind of a tough space to, to subdivide individually, and that just doesn't really make any sense. Uh, so then these would be the mezzanines on either side. There's the existing mezzanine in this back corner, which is gonna stay around here, we'll be back there. And effectively, that, that's really.
That's really it, what I'm talking about, um, the bays to the far right most. Opening that space up completely, if you go back from the first floor, you're right there.
Yeah, so right now, there's a wall here. I think this was originally from salt storage or sand storage, but we're gonna take this wall down and make these three contiguous bays. That all work together. And the back will be the only two bays that are completely separated from the rest of the building, that are the first storage. See that I can do sort of seasonal things in there, um, that will remain.
And then we've got the, you know, mechanics bit.
Yeah, so this dash line here, that you can see that, is actually a protection slab, a couple steps down, if you're looking, the back can go down. Nobody uses it, I don't know what they use it. No overlap, so we're gonna fill that in, um, and you've got one left, we're gonna keep it. Uh, and we're using operators, airlines, things like that, um, i-wash station, flop sink. Um, you've gone, we've talked about it a few times now, just try to make it work for people.
The majority of the areas that's right, that Dean has highlighted are inside the building. So an underground storage tank, which now our investigation leaves us accessible, it's a thing more inside. Uh, you have the, the bay, I call it Jiffy Lube Oil Tank Bay, which is going out, you have very, um, drains that have to get checked, right? All of that's gonna be reconciled, and we'll send a formal report to the D E P to close it out. Very missing sign.
Aren't you also putting in a fire suppression system?
Yes, thank you, yes.
That's not required by code number.
Right, we're putting it in.
Yep. And the hydrant flow test, the model flow test of American Water's been done to show that it's possible. Um, the application process of American Water's been started in a great work way, so yes, ours personally is going there. Thing. Idea with the PD, so.
You know, we're bringing it up to the current code, I mean, the stairway now is built in residential stair, very shallow, never speaks, like, but brand new stair, and. Um, basically keeping the structure of the building, but putting everything else in your bag.
Rich, how many vehicles do we have? The six bays or nothing? We're thinking fifty-year future, and, I'm, I'm not, we add more, but.
One of the changes we're gonna make is. We're, we're looking at pricing out landscape trailers, those trailers. Right now, we, we use an open trailer for our lawn cutting and dragging the baseball fields. So we visited a couple different places, we're writing quotes, so the plan is to park landscape trailers, have the truck hooked up at the end of the day. Outside, then when the employees come in in the morning, we just, everything will be in the trail, just like. Set up like a landscape trailer, and go out and start cutting. Right now, those trailers are pulled inside every night, because.
It's true.
So that will free up two large bays.
Truly.
That's. Huge. Um. The large, uh, the front-end loaders and the, and the dump trucks, and the garbage trucks that we use for brushing leaf collection, they will remain outside. But the bays are large enough during winter months, especially during the heat season. If we have a half a load of leaves on the truck, and it's four o'clock, and it's starting to get dark, we have to pull that truck in, because there's a chance it's gonna freeze. And it's like an IQ then the next morning. Because the bays are heated, so we have that ability. When we have a snowstorm coming, we actually shoehorn most of our trucks in. We basically have ten to twelve employees that are applying operation. And we will. We will get our pickup trucks and various equipment in there as best as we can. This actually maintains the six bays, the prior plan went down to five. And a small bay, so. Like I said in the opening remarks, this. This building serves us well. And the other change we've made within the department is we've shifted from. Larger dump trucks to more pickup truck operations. It's a, it's a more daily type used vehicle. The streets of Fairhaven are more than adequate to be, you know, those trucks, this, file the snow, no problem, F two fifty, F three fifty, like truck, rather than large trucks. And just the functionality of those vehicles are, are easier. Um, for guys getting in and out and using them, driving it to the, so. That kind of plays into that smaller condensed version that we've always been maintaining, um. But yeah, the, the, the short answer is the bays. Are adequate, the one piece of equipment we did add in the last two years is the street sweeper. That will be most likely parked, that gets parked inside every night, that will be parked. Inside as it does now, but we're looking to shift that over to then that wall comes down in that area. And, um. Just to touch upon the black space upstairs, yes, break room, lunchroom. We do training through our insurance company, and through all of our required courses we have to take, we bring people, we bring in third-party vendors constantly to train the guys and maintain. The training. Even having workstations, that was one of the things I implemented when I invaded fifteen years ago. We got computers. The guys have email, they've got internet, they've got P S three sixty-five. They have the ability to jump on these computers, it's not all about filling pockets that all day, it's. You know. Ev- everything, the other thing is, everything we do is saved in the cloud, we're a hundred percent cloud-based. You won't see filing cabinets at DPW. And that's something I'm really proud of, because. The, the electronic file management that we've been able to implement and to save the room. And, and have the, um. The ability to pull up a file on our phones, if we're out in the middle of a field cutting. Or if we're at Home Depot looking to buy something. Or if we're at Home Depot looking to buy something, if we need something, it's it's there. And. That type of. Management has allowed us to maintain that small space that we have because it is small and narrow.
And you also have much storage space now than during the period of, in the current, if you will, these new mezzanines.
Yeah, because. The functionality of a site on the exterior is gonna change because we're eliminating those large shipping containers. We need to put that stuff somewhere. So the plan is to put that into here and. You know, we've worked extensively with the architects, the engineers and the other professionals on the programming. For the future and for the immediate needs, so. It's where I.
Rich, where you, where do you guys keep your vehicle supplies? I'll see if it's just on shelf somewhere on one of the bases. Winter wipers, oil changes.
Actually, don't over stock too much of that.
Okay.
Um, the vendors we use do same day delivery. So if we know that we're gonna do an oil change or we need a set of tires. We call it in the morning. It's there typically before lunch. We do stock oil filters, windshield wipers, um, you know, nuts and bolts, things of that nature. But the days of actually having like Napa Auto Parts in your shop. You know, it's, we even have a account with Amazon now, so we have the ability to order on Amazon, so we can shop around, get better pricing. Stuff's here within a day or two. And those in tubes, we we have a, we have a more planned approach for vehicle maintenance. Whether it's small engines. Uh, snow plows, dump trucks, whatever they be. The preventive maintenance is one thing. You're gonna have breakdowns, so yes. Uh, but we do not heavily stock the stuff because it's. It's a common call wet. Yeah.
How about your, uh, I'm just looking at stuff inside the film. How about your compressor? Where's your air compressor gonna be?
Compressor needs to be replaced. The compressor we have, I think we actually got used.
The tall, tall floor mount one or whatever it is?
It's a, it's a decent sized unit, but it's maybe. It's smaller than this table, maybe half the size of this table. That's gonna be, that's part of the, one of the improvements we're gonna do is give it spot that out.
And then you have that hard pipe on your base, like wheels to pull down, chucks.
So yeah, so right now it's all hard pipe, pipes, and then there's. There's an area outside too, so. After hours, PD needs to fill up a tire or something, they can come down and do that. But the plan is, you know, we've had with the. The MEPs, which is mechanical, electrical and plumbing.
Yep.
We are gonna have. The plan is to have air and electric accessible on the bays, as I said, put down.
Yep.
Not so much. Like a Pep Boys, but that same functionality where it's just used and ease for the employee. Agreed. And efficient. That's what we're gonna house, the efficiency. Get in, get out. And everyone.
Do you have an hour or is there a plan for to like a generator?
Nersey generator? There is one.
Okay.
So. About five years ago, uh. Chief and I worked on a grant and we were able to secure a grant for this building and DPW, we had those generators installed. So one of the benefits of doing the renovation is we will be able to reuse that generator.
And you said that's natural gas, right?
That is natural gas. And. The generator serves the entire building and also, um, is back up to our people's as well. With the electric.
Definitely, the other improvements that we're making is all the vehicle fluids right now are stored inside. And you look at guidance out there, OSHA, all these barriers covering, they say an outdoor, the area makes sense. So I don't know if that's.
Yeah, we're still finalizing the detail on that, but right now. All your waste oils. And transmission fluids and antifreeze is hydraulic fluids all within fifty-five gallon barrels stored inside the building. The plan is, and and those get, we have a third party come in and pump those out as needed. The plan is to put a more contained system. At the exterior in a cabinet or some type of, um.
As shown where, shown.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, perfect.
Yeah, I think we showed like.
You show basically like a concrete bed off the one side.
But that will all be finalized, you know, actually for this process.
And you said you had to upgrade the exhaust system? I know some mechanic job, places like that, car dealerships. Some of them have the holes in the garage door, they hook a pipe to the exhaust, remember going on a vehicle and so on and so forth. You guys, I didn't see anything in the garage doors like that, so. What's the exhaust?
We're gonna have natural fans and stuff, or actually a couple of different types of fans, but they're. We're not gonna have that.
Right, 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 port hole or whatever, right?
So are there any other, uh, questions from the, from the planning board? I know we we have some members of the public. I just wanted to ask if there's any, any questions or comments from, uh, in the public. So, um.
No, thank you very much for the time and, uh.
Thank you.
Those are important, have run inspection of the board, just hoping to say to the council, to the news. Give me some feedback, so I can put it in the way as well.
About anything we need to. Highlight to Mayor and Council.
Play well done.
I agree.
Well done. Yeah.
That's it.
Uh, no, except that the, uh, technical design and review committee was, uh, in agreement with the presentation, so. I might want to include that.
Yeah, we should, we'd be better.
Dave, um, you know, saying before, I think the endorsement of the director of the works is important. I think the. Answering questions that public had in those feedback sessions, I think. Shaped this whole conversation. I think that is important as well, so, um. Yeah, no more questions for me. I think it's interesting going through. Being the second iteration of this that I've seen at least. That, two second that I've seen, um, uh, it kind of just. Reinforces my mind. It's okay to iterate on these things because they can be, they can, they can be anchored with and group. And so I think, uh. This is a good plan, so.
I I don't have any comments, uh, Mike.
Um, I I mean, I have no comments. I was with Betsy, these guys on the. Technically looks on review committee and. Man, I think we discussed anything that was a problem, narrowed it down and reflects right here in plan, so. Good job.
So I think they've tackled as many of the environmental things as they could. Uh, shade tree, uh, with the native species. Ground resistant plants, um, creating stormwater management, like the detainment system. Uh, looks like on the, on the, uh, electrical stuff, they did as much as they could. You know, with the roof and so on, um. And they looked at the cardboard, uh, not ability to do that, but they looked at it and then they're working on styrofoam. It's all. Great steps.
Great job.
Certainly, I think, I think it's worth mentioning also, I know that last time we took a look at something, we took, looked at a, a tall building, but my. The idea that you are now going to be able to renovate this building. I think your maximum height is eighteen. Eighteen feet, top to the top. Gorgeous. Fourteen, eighteen, eighteen, uh, eighteen, I think that's a. Good job for you. I mean, it is. You know, it's an industrial building and a residential center. The fact that you can get lower. Was in this phase, keeping the bays, improving the the use of the bays and that's outstanding. I think we can mention those two. Anything else?
That's it. I'll make a most. Direct you to.
Yeah.
Prepare that number of, uh, Mayor, Council on behalf of the plan, so I have to many of our comments. Sorry.
Ms. Bush, yes. Ms. Hatch, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Beal.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Mr. Ian.
Yes.
And Ms. Ralls.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Time, buddy. Thanks, everyone. Uh, so our, our next item of, uh, of new business is the consideration of the, of new ordinance, twenty twenty-three dash seven. Mending chapter thirty, land use to prohibit short-term rentals in residential zones. And so again, I'd ask that to frame our, I'm just thinking.
Your draft, if you hear, it's, uh, set forth in this land, you saw like forty fifty-five, ten, six. Uh, again, uh, prior to the adoption of the development regulations, revision or amendment thereto, the planning board. Shall make and trans, excuse me. The planning board shall make and transmit to the governing body within thirty-five days after referral. A report including identification and provisions and proposed development regulation. Revisions or amendments which are inconsistent with the master plan and recommendations concerning those inconsistencies. And any other matters of the board needs appropriate. That's substantially where we worked as the. I guess the, the planning, uh. Insult in the last phase here, we're with the legislative committee. As you know, we're charged with maintaining and keeping the master plan. So as we go through these development regulations. Uh, we identify inconsistencies with master plan. I also extend that to develop our development regulations and sometimes. They come into play. You have before you this evening, the, um, resident for the short, what I refer to as short-term rentals. You also have before you, uh, I believe it was passed out, a consistency determination prepared by H B A. Uh, and this is, this is one of the. That I would characterize as the easier lifts. Obviously, I think the municipality fear that restriction. Uh, with regard to committed uses, uh, it's a residential, will be a residential issue. Uh, in this instance, the general board, you are, we represent the H G A who did the consistency determination. Explains to you what's going on and what their conclusions were as sort of our expert regarding these movies.
Hi, everyone. I'll be super quick. Uh, my name is McKinley Marks with H G A. I've been here once or twice before. Um, so if you don't recognize me, you might see me a little more often now. Uh, we did review this, um, it's a very short ordinance. It, um, as it mentions, it's gonna prohibit short-term rentals in all of their. Residential zones. It also defines what a short-term rental is. If it's a cap on ninety-five days, which is consistent with what we've seen in other municipalities, these types of ordinances. And for violating, uh, for violating this restriction, it would be a fine of five hundred dollars. For each and every day that the rental is not compliant. So that could add a incredibly good leave. Depending on, uh, what the situation is. Uh, so we've reviewed it in light of all the various master plan documents of the town. Uh, we do find it consistent with the twenty sixteen reexamination report. There's a bunch of goals and objectives, we could say, but we thought the most important one, uh, was the goal of protecting and enhancing the existing character of the borough and. Especially the residential quality of the neighborhood. So it keeps it residential. It keeps them from turning into what might be a. Slightly commercialized use of that residential zone, um, and it's consistent. Uh, we also have to review it in light of the housing element and fair share plan to determine that it's not jeopardizing any of the affordable housing opportunities. Uh, this does not, short-term rentals doesn't come into play with any affordable housing issues. So, uh, it's not inconsistent with your housing plan either. Uh. I don't have any recommendations for any changes, uh, consistent with what we've seen in other towns and, uh, comes under enforcement issue, but I think it's absolutely appropriate for the borough of Fairhaven.
What is the, sorry, what is the enforcement? Like, who does the enforcement or who's police of this?
We do see a lot of times it comes down to. Neighbors, residential people, um, being able to be good watchmen. Um, you can also, you know, there's a point, you know, policemen or, uh. Walking the blocks, driving around, they do start to know the neighborhood. It's a small town, as we mentioned tonight, so I think there's, there's some consistency here, police force there. Um, I live in a multi-family building and I do have a neighbor who sits and just looks on Zillow maybe once every couple of weeks to see if anything's listed from our building. Um, it's actually much more frequent than you would imagine. Um, usually we do find that it actually, the residential leasing is a pretty effective way.
I, I think that's what you're really seeing is now, correct? And we, we agree as a result of. You know, the Airbnbs and those types of things where people come in and sort of, you know. Live either while a person's in the house in special space. Um, as with anything, I think probably start off as a good idea. I think with the complaints that you're seeing now from. Uh, residents in the neighborhoods, as that, as that place is more and more successful. You have more traffic.
Mm-hmm.
You may have, and with those folks who come to visit, they have their guests and those things so that if it is an existing facility where you're renting a room. It it basically. Begins to impact and change the character of the residential neighborhood. It's now. It it obviously isn't in a hotel or a motel because it's usually on a smaller basis, but still, there are more people that are parking. Uh, to the extent that you have places like where, where parking can be a premier. You know, where the, the resident is using the driveway, the. Guest is using the street. You can see that after a while, it becomes a little more burdensome on that residential neighborhood.
We also find that it can affect housing stock because you, you get developers who purchase a home with the sole purpose of renting it out through an Airbnb. So. You end up eliminating, uh, available housing through residents that actually want to live in it.
What about the example of somebody who. Um, is renovating their house and looking for a short-term rental and that maybe didn't really need to be out for sixty days? I I'm curious, like, other municipalities that you've dealt with. I I think the obvious kind of ninety-five day thing here is the beach, like the summer season, right?
You're close to desirable location.
Right, so. Wha- what about the other realistic scenario of like, uh, somebody who's just displaced for sixty days?
I've, I've seen, depending on the community, I actually, um, I work at a community in Norris County. They do have, uh. An ordinance that allows someone, depending on the size of the property or where they are, to to do temporary housing even on their property for a period of time. They'd have to get board approval for that. Um, and there's no such thing as a temporary experience, but I have seen boards almost, uh, address. You know, someone needs to be there for a term, so they address it in that sense. Uh, depending on how this works out and if there are issues that are brought to the council, it might be we're, uh, reevaluating to see if. If that turns out to be a consistent issue or if there's, you know, a case here or there, that can be dealt with on a case-by-case basis. I heard that you seem to be undergoing something similar right now.
Yeah, but we're, we're out for a year, so it's not it. But I'm just thinking about, I'm thinking about.
Reasonable question.
Yeah, I think about the people who are, uh, smaller school projects that still are, but if your utilities are turned off in your house for sixty days, you gotta go somewhere.
You've got no water or kitchen, right? And what's the process? What's, what's the process to, let's say there was somebody that needed sixty days? You know, what, what, how would they go about it?
Right now, there's no recommended, or sorry, there's no established process. Uh, I would imagine that the, what they would do would be to come into the building department or the zoning department. Uh, they might have to go before council if, if they have a place lined up. Also, if they just have a friend and they're gonna move into their spare bedroom for a few days, that's not the same as, not a few days, I'm sorry, but if they're gonna take over their wing of the house for a few months, let's say. They're certainly the friend, they're not paying rent. It's more of a long-term visitor in that, in that regards. Um, if they're, the problem comes down to, there's probably not houses openly for rent for thirty days at a time. They're all happening on Airbnb, so. If they could do it, if they get caught, it would probably need to be an approval from the council to maintain residency there.
So maybe it's worth having some just recognition that there's a scenario where. It is a realistic request that, uh, somebody displaced. You know, from the, maybe if utilities are turned off, that could be the trigger or something like that. I, 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 are we? Do you have a letter to the council?
Well, that could certainly be something that could be in the comments that for a resident that can establish the residency and establishing.
But you're talking about somebody renting their place out. You're not talking about somebody seeking. Seeking, seeking housing somewhere, right? Like, you're, you're, what you're saying is. Hey, my utilities got turned off. I gotta find somewhere to rent. It, it, you, you're, you're sort of, this. Address.
On the other side of it.
Yeah, like the other side of it, where it's like, um, I wanna rent my house so I can make some money, right? Like that, or. Uh, maybe that's it. But if, if you need to go somewhere, you gotta go somewhere, right? And so you'd have to go somewhere where you can rent the house for a short-term period of time. You would not currently be.
Now no longer allows it.
Yeah.
To the issue.
Right, it could be there.
So this ordinance prohibits.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. But you have people in, but you have, but you have people in. You have people living here, like, like, what, what are you, you're not, people aren't gonna rent their house.
Yeah, but what if somebody had a house for rent and did that on, on Realtor dot com, but then ideally they would like it for a year, but. They call them and says, I only need it for, and nobody's renting it. I only need it.
Yeah, you want that weekly comment, yeah.
Right, and they say, oh, that would be great, but now they can't do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there could be a reason why someone in one of the. Occasionally, depending on when your renovation is done, you wanna take your kids out of school, these kinds of things, sure. It could certainly be something that we can raise as a comment to Mayor Council. It's not an inconsistency with the. With the master plan or your development regulations. But again, any other areas of concern, it certainly varies that maybe as we progress with this, in a situation like that, one of the comments was. Now, would there be some mechanism to allow that? And if not, the answer is no. If the answer is yes, we could think about that.
If you, if you're renovating, so using the renovation example, if I'm renovating my house. And I go live, let's say, in Rumson or somewhere else. I can still, my kids still go to sickles because I own the house, I'm paying the taxes. There, doesn't matter where I, you know, where I happen to be at that. Cause I own the house, I'm paying the taxes. There doesn't matter where I, you know, where I happen to be at that period of time.
To protect residents against rapid turn.
Yeah, yeah. It's different than sixty days like.
Right, and there's, there's an appeal process that a resident or a landlord could go.
Oh, really?
So, but the idea is, I I got a letter today from a resident, they said they're, they live on Baton Road. The house next door to them, they said two hundred guests over the past year.
I I saw that, you know, that was a, that's a nightmare scenario for any.
Exactly, so uh it was, it was the consensus of the council with advice of. The uh borough attorney that in ninety five day. Um limit. You, you had, you had to rent your property for nine, more than ninety five days was defendable. Um less than that is hard to defend.
But there's one real process.
That, that, the provision of the heal process is not continued in this ordinance.
No. It is not.
I think, I think there's a little bit of a blind spot here when it comes to that scenario.
The, the reality is very few people rent a house for sixty days. It's usually a situation. Yeah, yeah, that's very rare.
And you need something. We have nothing, we need something.
Exactly.
I mean, I know, I I went and looked at property, it's part of it. I looked at all sorts of different towns and areas. And you'd be surprised some of the places you think were gorgeous and beautiful, when you got there to find a house to wait for sale, you looked around and it was. You know, there's ten houses in the street, two of them were living there, the rest were all rentals. And depending on the town and area you were in, it could be a weekend rental, a weekly rental. So you would go there to get your. Vacation home or your retirement home, and you're never gonna have a neighbor because it's a revolving door. If somebody knew. Maybe they could be great people or they could be the worst people in the world living next to you. Every other week it changes. So some of the towns, like you were saying, or, you know, we're at ninety five days, and there's some of the towns were thirty days, some of the towns were sixty days. As far as, you know, to stop that revolving door of Airbnbs, you know.
I would say the residents from all of the responses that I've received are overwhelmingly in favor of the ninety five day.
And it is appropriate, given your location to beaches and people are gonna wanna be in this region, especially in the summer, and that would cover an entire. You know, somebody wants to come in summer here, that would cover that whole period of time.
So Friday morning, weekend to Labor Day.
I don't know, but yeah, being similar.
But you do, you do hear that in some of the, in some of the resort communities where. Families, as, as a matter of economics, they move out of their house, they cover their mortgage for the rental for that summer month by simply. Taking that house from the pool and out, as opposed to being at the, at the, I'm not taking on any community, but someplace where there isn't a beach. They get the beach and the shoulder seasons and everything else, and they cover their mortgage by simply renting it in the summer while the crashes for sure.
Or if you go to Florida for the winter and then somebody rents your house for sixty days or ninety.
Yeah, I've, I've known. Who, who got away.
Benefits to limit again, but I also see the detriment to. Your right to the homeowner to operate your home that you've spent a considerable amount of money on. The way that you want, and I get. The transient nature of an Airbnb or something to that effect. But I do also understand that there are certain waiting circumstances where somebody may need to do that for thirty days or sixty days or ninety days.
Yeah, I think again, though, the jurisdiction of our board is not, not to, to oblige on whether it's a, it's a good ordinance or not. It's, it's, it's the ordinance as written, consistent with the master plan, so.
Yeah, I do think the appeal process that was mentioned would help to extend any waiting circumstances. Good to know that's new based.
Basically, we have to decide is this consistent with the master plan?
That's correct.
And and with regard to that, you can certainly adopt the opinion that's presented to you by H G A, make that as you will. And you can also say, and as I said before, other matters of concern, you can raise this issue to make sure that there's an appeal process. And extend waiting circumstances where the underlying circumstances are not, this ordinance was intended to. We'll put a laser beam on where you do have a person who needs a shorter period of time for legitimate reasons because they're out of the. That was looking, no harm referencing that if we want to do that, if that's your direction to me.
Yeah, before we, before we do that, again, there's, there's people here from the public, if anybody wants to make a comment.
This one, uh Mr. Cherry, um two questions. Mr. Kovacs, the way the ordinance is written, it says ninety five days, should it say ninety five continuous days?
I, 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 I have some concern about that. It, it does not say, it probably, it probably should.
Yeah.
Because I think that's what you're looking for.
The other one from a zoning perspective, I think it's written as residential zones, but given the. Potential for housing in the V one and V two, especially with the overlay zones that we put in a couple of years ago. Maybe it's truly included any residential property, even so, whether it's a, a, or five or ten, V one, V two.
It covers all the residential, but it does not cover the B.
Right, so maybe we, maybe we wanna extend that to the business owners as well.
Yeah, because ninety five percent of all the housing is in the residential zone.
Right.
I don't know, it's, it's, I'm, I'm.
So wait, there, there would be, I guess, a handful of residents, right, that would be in the.
Right now there are, but given the scope of the overlay zones that we put in place to prepare your housing, there could potentially be a lot of mixed use in that area of. You know, the substation in and of itself, that has a count of units, there are eighteen units or something like that, so that's. We're talking fourteen, so that's fourteen potential working couples that you have. Does it continue to be one?
Yeah, and those are, those are apartments, those are residential apartments.
Yeah. Yeah, they're keeping those strengths, right? And I could still let that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a great point. I think a little precision on the language on the zoning is important as well.
Just all residential units really.
And yeah, other last question, as a, obviously as a member of zoning, would, would somebody be able to come to us for a use variance or a D, a. A de-use variance to change this? Is that, would that be important?
It's, it's, it's an interesting point because again. To my way, I think you could have a non-conforming pre-existing residential use in, in some others, let's say one of the zones that isn't mentioned.
Right.
And in that instance, you could have your Airbnb, so I think you do need to tighten that up, and I. I think. I don't know that you get a use variance for this. I, I, I would have to, I would, I would really have to take a look at that. Because this is, this is, this is, it's not really like a non-permitted use, but it's, it's, it speaks in those terms. Which you would think a D variance should get to it, but.
Did the original draft of this ordinance would not have been going where that sort of the. It, it was cleaned up and shortened quite a bit, the original.
And, and, and why I'm hesitating, I don't wanna get too far into the legal, you know, usually if you have a. You know, non-permitted use, it's something that, you know, you go and get, you know, a permit for. Or if you establish it, you're usually not having a five hundred dollar fine associated with the, the zoning violation. So I'd want to do a little. Yeah, but there, there clearly would be a mechanism, there clearly has to be a mechanism where if you find this violation, you know. You're notifying, you know, the owner and I guess the person who's doing it. There could be some precision there as to where the fine is going, because if it's going to the corporation that, that, that built this building. Right from the get-go to operate it, this Airbnb, I'm not sure.
But uh I'll be supportive of your decision, and I know that also back. And uh hopefully we'll see our way through. Thanks.
Any other comments? So, um, oh, go ahead.
How'd they come up with the five hundred dollar fine?
Actually, it's not five hundred dollars anymore, it's a thousand.
I, I was gonna say, I think you need to increase it because. Again, I, I know, yeah, yeah, I mean, you rent, rent your massive house out for twenty grand a week and thirty five hundred fines. Doesn't mean anything, and I get great.
It's, it was up to a thousand dollars.
It's getting better.
That was our background because, you know, I don't, I don't care if I pay fifty dollars to leave my lease in the street. But even if you charge thirty five hundred dollars for a weekend for your house and you have to pay a five hundred dollar fines, deal.
Yeah, I, I think, I don't think you can exceed a thousand because our jurisdiction on municipal court would have a. Dollar value as to whether that becomes a, a degree upon, but um there's no reason.
Yeah, you have to do a thousand.
And it's a thousand when you're not complying. So if it's ninety five days, if you rented for a weekend, you're not fined.
You're fined.
Thousand dollars, you're fined ninety three days of a detriment, so you're fined ninety three thousand dollars. So even if it's five, like, you know, it.
It's a big number.
Oh, sure is.
Yeah. Got some teeth.
Oh, yeah. Right, so the longer in the term.
The longer you violate, yeah, the longer you violate.
For people that are, somebody renting a house two hundred nights a year, right? Will get slaughtered by something like this, right? So because of the non-compliance, but. The, the family who say is out for seventy five days and they're fifteen days not complying, it, you know. There will be a process that you could deal with it under those circumstances, but it's not as pure, although still pure.
Does the fine attach to the property, like a lien? How is the, uh, to be close to like the, how, how do I have a town fines attach? Like a lease palfon, that just keeps ignoring it.
They get a summons and if they don't pay the fine, they're, they have to report.
Okay, it's like a bargain, bigger like anything else. Okay, so it's to the person, not.
It is not clear in the ordinance, but in this instance, I think we'll go to the property owner, that there is a violation of this ordinance. Probably issue for someone's then there, if you have sufficient evidence, they can meet the court and say, no, no, you're mistaken, I wasn't doing this, you're wrong, or. Or our purchase is the classic defenses, not me and, or someone else. Judge makes the determination, so we also come in. Or whoever, who, who was called witnesses, this is all. You may never ever get that person who actually could rent her in that courtroom.
Yeah, I don't think you would. You'd get the guy who's renting it, which is what makes that.
So I think, um, so I, I think we have a few comments to send to, to Mayor Council, one about the zoning. Um and then to the ninety five and two years days. Um and.
No, raising the fine, but he said he raises.
Anything else? Can anyone think of?
Just the appeal process, I'm just making sure that.
Feel. Okay. Okay. Make that motion that I should prepare that writing to Mayor and Council concerning the ordinance.
I will make a motion that Mr. Kovacs prepare the, uh, the letter to Mayor Council without any worries.
I'm sorry.
Miss Boni, yes, Miss Cott, yes, Mr. Earl.
Yes.
Mr. Phyllis.
Yes.
Mr. All.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Olson.
Yes.
And that's one second reading of this is.
Uh at the next council meeting, which is. One day, the. And the sixth, okay.
Um so we'll move to the administrative items. Sure, do that, Mr. Buzz Chan.
Sure, sounds good. Um, uh, I believe all the planning board members were, um, delivered copies via physical or email. Of the minutes from May sixteenth, twenty twenty three meeting, and the twenty twenty one annual report is approved by the zoning board adjustment. Um start with the approval limits from May sixteenth, twenty twenty three meeting. Uh we have, uh I'd like to make a motion to approve. For what, how do we do this again? So anyone have any comments that they haven't been able to address, uh, through, uh, just email or whatever, it's Sandy. I, I don't have any comments, so. So do I. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from May sixteenth planning order regularly. Second.
Yes, Miss Cott, yes. Uh, Mr. Phyllis.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes. Moving on to the. Um, this, so this is just a, yeah, just acknowledge that we all received copies of the twenty twenty one annual board zone board. So this is to be having, yeah, any comments?
I actually, my only question is, is, is just my own lack of knowledge. Why is it two years and, you know, delayed? Is that, is that by design or is? Are we? Oh, just to back up then, okay, right. Okay, yeah, no, I just, I just didn't know if there was, the other report will be. Okay, well, I look forward to that. Uh, does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns about the twenty twenty ones on the board anywhere? Most familiar names of this twenty twenty one report. Um, like to make a motion to approve twenty twenty one.
It's really our adoption under.
Yeah.
The zoning board adjustments was charged by statute and. Uh and then report this to us, acknowledging that that was not, we received it. If there were any concerns that we wanted to address in there, we certainly do that as a planning board. If there were any recommendations by the zoning board or adjustments. For us to take a look at by way of more of these changes or changes in the. What we would just see. Let's say you were to see that the zoning board adjustment granted one hundred percent of the variances for, pick something easy, uh. Backyard decks. That, you know, fifteen applications made, fifteen applications approved, that might be something the planning board would take a look at. Perhaps way to Mayor and Council and say, look, since people are seeming to do this, it's not usually a good way to govern by variance. Maybe we want to take a look at, and if there are sufficient backyard separation from the other backyard neighbor. Are we really concerned that that encroaches, you know, ten feet in, into, into their backyard if the neighbors, if you still got fifteen feet on the other side of that. For buffering for the other neighbor. Um, that's one of the things that I think are very beneficial with these reports. If you constantly see similar types of variances being granted. I mean, we have some anomalies, we have a lot of things in the borough where particularly, and you see this a little bit more on the zoning board adjustment. You know, it's, it's uh. E C, existing condition, existing condition, existing condition, existing condition, and usually the only other variance you see is improving. To the, to the betterment, if you will, existing condition that would. Further encroachment, and now they will be back, but they still need some help. If you saw those types of things, that might be somewhere with the planning board or even recommendations on board adjustment, we take a look at. By way of example, you know, the municipality that I, that I work in, there's been, uh. We don't have as an accessory structure, a, uh, a pool house or a cabana. You know, that, that's not, not a committed accessory structure, and people are saying. If, if, if I've got sufficient space by way of building coverage or the purpose coverage or lot coverage. Why can't I have something where, you know, I can shower before I go into the pool shower, maybe have a lavatory there, as long as we're not gonna create a habitable space? You know, I'll even take it out of the back, back end of the existing garage, you know, can I do that? You know, just a hub, a hub, a garage door that goes up the back, can I do that? We had that suggestion from our zoning board adjustment in, in this municipality, and we're taking a look at it as to. What parameter we'd wanna do if we want to do that, you know, obviously it would only be accessory to a swimming pool, accessory structure. But then size, what goes in it, so it doesn't become a, a se- a second residence at the back of the house. Those are the kinds of things that sometimes you'll see in those reports. If you see something like that, I guess that might be something that they could look at. And need to contact the council representative, share some thoughts.
Did anybody notice, notice anything that they wanted to address? Thank you. Um, so then are we making a motion to approve or making a motion to? Like to make a motion to adopt the twenty twenty one annual report for the zoning board adjustment.
Second. Miss B, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Phyllis.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
That'll be it, put it in the books. Oh, public comment, I'm sorry, on any matter. All right, well, is there? Second. Thank everyone. Bye.
Thank you.